... She's having a difficult day today. On this work session, or we do have an agenda, a few items to... Specific things we need to discuss, maybe go through some of the things on the regular agenda list. And then come on in and post during work session.
And then say that one.
That's how I do it.
Okay. The one thing that was hurting so bad is kind of feeling better, but he's not staying in line. And the other thing, he's raising off the good end of top of hospital and surgery. So it's not sounding too good.
I'll go ahead and follow this work session in order. It's 2018, 2013, a little bit after four. We have an agenda, I think everyone has got it in front of them in the work session. On this, we have Wanda Mill, who's trying to get down here as soon as she can, to continue to send the color schemes for the destruction there. And then also, discussion we need to be having about the reevaluation, about how we would proceed with that. I have some thoughts on it, and I'm sure the rest of y'all do too, so keep doing this. And two, maybe during this section too, it's not, I don't know if I have to have a... Make an amendment to the agenda, but you know, under the general discussion, I'd like to discuss the possibility in the month of April, by changing our regular board meeting to the 22nd. And that is for personal reasons, and y'all want to go ahead and do it anyway, that'd be fine with me. But my daughter, Miss Ray, is due on the 17th for a C-section. She has to have a C-section for her second brain job. And that's happening during that week, so if it'd be possible, I've kind of looked at it, and it would be something that would work out for time between weeks. So that's something we, I'd like for you to consider, look at your calendars and see if that'll work. Also, I'd like to add on to this too, but Beck, if we could during this period of time, I know it's on our regular agenda, but talking about the possibility of having a workshop or two on the budget process, about how we might streamline that a little bit. I did go in and meet with Greg and Beck, I guess it's one day last week, and had some discussions, you know, with regard to talking with me about what we could see as being the things that the board needs in order to make those decisions. So I'm for it, I need to have a further understanding of the budget process, and then to understand, you know, generally, the way that it works out is under the manager form of government. And with the board, such as ourselves, we take recommendations that comes to the board. So we can have that discussion and decide what we want to do or not to do. So having said that, we go ahead and, we're waiting for Wanda to get here. Are you going to be on the agenda there?
Well, Alicia Paul.
It's enclosed first, so it'll be... But now, I mean, it...
Well, she, I just know, I hadn't contacted her.
Okay.
Yeah, contacted me.
Okay, it'll be...
And then she had to go to actually, so I didn't know if we were still going to do it today or not.
Yeah, it'll be after the 5:00 meeting, this afternoon. But I mean, you're more than welcome to stay.
Okay, and about the priorities?
Yeah, we have to go when it closes because it's personnel.
Yeah. I'm sorry about that.
No, that's not the person, she's been talking about the personnel. Then we're going to get the priorities that we chose for the community health assessment approved.
Oh, yes.
That was presented last month.
I thought we adopted those last time.
Presented that community health assessment.
Okay, so you want to talk on that a little? Well, it's the same thing that they talked about.
You would just tell us the two priorities that we can...
Two, oh, God, that's a good drill down a little bit, because there were several on the last... You'd like to step right on up. And the other issue though, will have to be a close session.
Right, that'll just be Alicia.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's fine.
And this is Chris taking call in the spot, or Ford?
Same call for.
By the way.
Welcome to you.
How are y'all today?
Very good, good seeing you.
So I'll just tell y'all that Alicia, last time, talked to you about the community health assessment, and then the priorities that the community health assessment had identified. Among those, we chose two priorities to focus on for the next few years. The community health assessment, as you told me before, is done every, will be done in every three years. So for the next few years, we'll be doing physical activity and access to healthcare. That's what we'll be focusing on.
Okay. And I believe with all that's going on, depending on how we deal with getting some walking trails and things like that, that'll be good. And that's physical activity?
Yes, and then access to healthcare.
Access. All right, any of y'all have any questions or comments, Ms. Ford? All right then, that's very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, that'll be, can we give her a call, or is that her sometime?
She don't have to come back for the next one, just as long as that group or this up in the actions in the next meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, we're still in the process of waiting for Wanda, she's supposed to... You said something about her trying to get here?
She wasn't running late yet, and she said she was trying to get down here. She wanted you guys to look at the color schemes, but I'll go ahead and tell you, they're neutral, more in the line of tans and browns, and I mean, it's nothing, it's very comforting, comfortable. But she just wanted to get y'all approval, and they were sending the color scheme by FedEx, so she was waiting to go get that. And she had a meeting she had to be at for this facility, I think at 2:00. And so she was trying to hurry to get back to this one, so that's why she made it like that.
All right, we'll come over there. Let's go on to item two, please, on this reevaluation start date, in-house or contract. I would like to open it up for the sketching.
I didn't feel it necessary to bring her, I mean, if that's okay with board seat. She pretty much had told you guys, but now if you want me to call her, I'll be more than glad to.
Apparently in the local paper.
Yeah, it's on the headlines.
You want me to talk? Oh, yeah, you can talk. Can you do this? I was monitoring that the county taxpayers have paid money to have our county employees trained to do the reevaluation. And also, the discussion led toward not enough manpower to do that. And my stance will remain constant, as long as I agree that in this county, and having a local government, I would be in favor of hiring level people to do the jobs in this county, if at all possible. And this brought up some good points in our discussions as well. And I can make some further comments, but it would need to be enclosed, but that is, that's where I sit.
Well, you know, I look at it the same way. What was quoted in the paper, and what was discussed previously, was that we were, as a ward, to select. And first of all, Ms. Clerk, I would like clarification, if we could, I should have done this earlier, about us actually deciding on 15 as being the date for reevaluation. You know, I know that this board had a lot of discussion about that being done and not waiting eight years. That's an extent of discussion. Now, as for us saying that we're going to do it and have that done in 15, I'm not sure about it. And I can stand to be corrected on it. If in fact this ward took a vote up and down about it being, you know, 15's going to be the year, that's all well and good. You want to do it, this board's decided, we weren't discussing?
Did we vote on it?
We did decide to go with the 2015, we had to start in 2013 to have it done by 2015. The reason being, it's a non-election year for the... That's, that was the main reason that it was brought up.
Okay.
And that was four years. And the reason that you wanted to have another one in the four and not the eight was because of the schedule values being so skewed, because the economy was so booming. And now, you know, in the last year since that reval went in, it's been nothing. So that was more of a cleanup reval, I think, instead of going the eight years is the reason that y'all lean that way.
Okay, thank you. But that being said, go ahead, Bill.
I think we should have a reval within the next two years.
Right.
Because when the last one were done, they used figures back five to six years prior. That was a good old golden days, everything would be clicking. Four years ago, the succession hit the bottom of that list. Now then, another thing we're going to get into. If they go back, there have been some properties sold in Graham County in the last four years. Some of it has went outrageously high, some of it has went crazy. But if they go back and put a little figure up on the next reval, say here we're going to base... Well, I use this, I'll give you a good example. The 13 acres of school park, over half a million dollars. That's high-priced land, very bad. This old man sold it back up in the hollow here, it's $2,500 acre, flat land. Compared the difference to it.
Well, that's the issue, and that brings up another point too, about the scheduled values. That's one of the things that I mentioned, you know. We are the equalization review board, as it's set up in Graham County, and citizens come in here and they have questions, like we said. And they're sitting, and you want to know what is the basis for the valuation of this versus this? And I was sitting here, and I did not have a grasp of that, because I had nothing to do with it from the standpoint of, well, I'm not washing my hands of it, I'm still responsible. But with this next cycle, I think it needs to be, and I'm not even going to make assumptions about anything, but there is a process that the scheduled values have to be presented. There is a process, timelines, and there's things that have to be done, and decisions made by this board. It's not just a carte blanche, it's just not a carte blanche thing, that you just say, yeah, you go ahead and do it, you know, this, that, and the other. Because this board, it has to come with an idea of understanding why the property is, you know, evaluation year, year, and year. And with this, I think it's understood, and I hope it's understood, that if the mill rate, you know, which is charged for the $100 more seat, we understand how that balance goes. You know, you have the evaluation, the evaluation drops, but we have to bring up the mill rate. And then there's, I've learned a lot in the last two, and you're better than, you know, coming into this neutral zone, you know, where it is revenue neutral, is that the term, Ms. Finance Officer? To where it comes to that balance right there, that you're going to have X number of dollars to provide the services that you need. And I'm hoping this is going to be understood, that when that evaluation, evaluation goes down, you know, that the mill has to maintain or to rise. But still, it's going to be represented with the true value of the land. And that's what really, that's really the deal. And I still know that there was some legislation, there was laws, matter of fact, about homestead that was in place in North Carolina through the General Assembly, where folks, you say, well, that's discrimination, because you have folks that are here. I wouldn't give, like you call it peace and hold the world together, and I quote you a lot a lot. And yet, somebody else will come and look at that, and that's their bit of heaven. And they'll pay instead of $3,000, $400 an acre, they'll pay 10. And then all of a sudden, go and bring that $10,000 an acre into the formula to establish the valuation of property, that's scary. And I know that a lot of folks have been on boards, commissioners of the state of North Carolina, and looked at the same, the same thing. But I want to have an understanding of it, because you know, some of you will still be on the board, but the billion are gone, if that's still what the billion decides to do. And regardless, whoever's going to be down the road, they need to understand why the property is that way.
There's the schedule there, the scheduled values. Is there a way to set them so that it equalizes, like, the property that holds the world together as opposed to the property that was just bought by the school?
Well, you see, that...
And see, I need to understand how that schedule value is set, and I really don't want to move too much forward until I do know how that works and can make a reasonable decision on it.
Okay. You got mine?
Yes.
It's appraised at market value. So she has to take, and there's a word, cost of market value sales in this county. If there is none in this county, comparable counties to Graham County, and you have to have three, and you get a low, a medium, and a high. You do not have to take the high or the medium, you can take the low. Then we go to the mill rate of raising that, mill rate, if the evaluation goes down, or the market value. So there's your, there's your balancing.
So who decides which column to use?
That is the assessor.
At the recommendation of the assessor?
At the recommendation of this board approves it. But she has to get, you have to, she has to make the schedule of values according to the market value sales. May I suggest the sale she uses printed out and handed to each one of them? I would very much recommend that. Listening to all the conversation, and another thing I would recommend, in-house is great. You know, hire, you know, put it out for, in the paper, hire whoever. They have a year to train, as far as training goes. The dams, the assessment of the dams, I would recommend that we hire a company that knows how to value those. That would be the only thing.
Yeah, and the reason you want to do that would be because typically on an income-producing property like a dam, you would not use the sales approach or the comp approach, you'd use the income approach.
Right.
And that's very technical work, and you need somebody that does this a lot.
Well, that would be considered specialty.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Can you do that with kind of like a, you know, equipment arm approach?
I think so, I think that's how, kind of how it was handled the last time. It started out as in-house, but then the assessor got behind, and so the company had to come in and kind of, you know, finish up. But I think you can, you can do a mixed bag of doing partial in-house and then contract out the...
Well, you know, as I understand, the transition that went from Alpoa over into Brookfield is going to be a boon for the county.
Yeah.
Because of the improvements they did to the dams, that's not reflected yet, as I understand. So, you know, I understand all that, but you see, the argument's going to come up, and I know this board makes the decision on it, is that it's a question of personnel. We can hire personnel for less than $200,000. And then also attach to that each specialty evaluations that we have to have done on those power generated utilities and whatever. Now, if I'm wrong, I need to hear it, because, you know, but then, you know, if whatever the monies that are spent, and I'm right with Commissioner War on this, if we can keep the money within our, within our community, and keep it there in our tax value, and keep it inside our county, our people working, then that's the thing to go and do. I believe we have people in this county that can do that. And then the next question comes up about the issue of training. Connie's made comment to that, we sent folks off, and the assessor, as I understand, assessor is to do assessments.
Which I didn't do for 15 years.
Well, that's what I want to understand. And if it is honestly a question of manpower, I know that there's a peak time of tax collections, there's a time of getting out those notices, there are all those things that come at peak time, but those are predictable, I'd say. And then, you know, if it comes to that point, then let's, let's go and look about having this done in-house. And here's another issue about it. If that assessment's already done in 2010, and it went back that period of time, then we're going to have to have an understanding that, that side, how side-to-side, partial-to-parcial visit that had been done previously. So how in-depth and complicated is it going to be with any new powers or...
How many buildings have we had? For me, it's first.
Right, you see, that's what you're basically something on, is that those permits have been pulled to do the additions, and I know they're not.
Well, five years ago, Mike, you go down here to the bank. Stop and eat down at the priest's property, and there's no living, 120 dead, no human.
Right.
Which that was the bank's fault.
Right.
I realize that. Today, you walk in there, and there's a homestead down, and they'll look at you. What do you mean, boy, Mike? We're looking at Andy's bills. So there you go. That's, that's where I'm forgetting one outside the freezer that appraises to the bank. And he goes out and looks at the priest's property, and gives you the valuation on it for what the bank will loan on it, that's the first place you go to get money on the priest's property, is to the bank. He'll, he'll know the valuation of it, and let all the responsibility go through him. It won't be this here out of present like this, and in-house will do it over here. It'll all have to be discussed and come to a medium decision.
Well, I think we have an approved appraiser that lives here in this county.
Yeah, we do. Maybe more than that.
Yeah.
And then if you want to go with it, invite somebody.
And he appraises for banks, like you say.
But you know, my lead is, in just talking in broad strokes, is that if we can do this in-house, that's what we need to do.
Right.
And I'm with you that a...
I'm not objecting to an in-house, keep everything within the county that we can.
Right.
But I'm still forgetting an outsider appraiser to oversee it, so that'll have to be coordinated through him. That way, there won't be none of this old buddy-buddy stuff.
Right. And you know, you can, you can see that and understand that. And you know, a lot of times, it gets complicated, but you mentioned somebody in the banking industry having an input in valuation, but you go with that too, about realtor. And I'll tell you what, when it comes to E and R, when you get away from here, and this is what we do here, that this board represents that, boards of E and R are generally composed of, composed of the bankers and the real estate folks that have a better grasp of things than here we are. I mean, we're just kind of a random collection of folks that have been elected, duly elected, but with a background, and the assumption is that I know everything about land rights, and I don't. That we have people in our, in our system that know that. But I think you're right, if we have something that is, but then that leads towards saying, well, let's just hire somebody.
Well, there again, we have county employees who sent us schools. Last year, they ought to pick up some knowledge of going to these schools.
Well, then it comes down to the decision too, this is what I have to make, about hiring temporary employees, and then, I don't understand how that works, Ms. Human Resource Clerk. Do they have benefits for temporary, do they have...
We have to offer them health insurance if they work over 20 hours now.
And they surely would.
Mm-hmm. So, and then once you, if you rip them after two years or however many years, then you pay 100% on their part.
Well, if it's 31 hours a week, that would pay company.
What if you contract?
You run into some issues if you are pretty much supervising every move they make and setting their schedule, then their employees are regardless. So you would have to, if you contract them, you'd have to say, okay, we need these properties appraised by X date, you do it, and then, when it works to your schedule. And then you can pay them in a contract.
Who do you think you got a contract for the part-time, or the appraiser for the land?
I contracted somebody to, for additional, you know, personnel to do the, to do the assessment.
Well, now, that, that's all this information right up there, the register, the agent, and the courthouse. Because every time you go to build shit on the house, you got to go and build it again.
Right.
They should have all down records right there, 90% of this could be done right there.
Right.
Because they could tell how much building has been done on in the last four years, who's built and who not. The football firm on this rock there thing, that sure does sound like, he should have overworked it if he hadn't done this at all, and the value of it's fallen or increased, we want to know.
But then I see it too, that those properties are going to have to be put into the schedule of values for some understandable reason. Mathematics, and obviously, go ahead and use the dirty word, if we're going to start comparing our sales to other sales in counties adjacent to us...
You can't do it.
You know why? You go to one that's got zoning, and I'll guarantee you a piece of property that's own-veryed, it's own-veryed from a piece of property that's not.
Right.
And nobody wants to hear about zoning, that's taking away people's rights of their property, and I understand it, but it's got its trade-offs too. And I'm not one for zoning myself, but I know that when it comes to us comparing ourselves to sales and market value, counties that do have zoning, then we're affected. That's just all there is to it. And then they just want to say, well, that's just in the municipality, or that's just in this. I'll guarantee you there are counties that have zoning restrictions on who builds where and what. And we have to go and say, well, this is what this county's doing, so if we don't have any comp values there, we're going to have to go out to another county and find it. So what's the determination which county we use? We're not going to use Charlotte Mac, we're not going to use Alexander County, we're not going to use, you know, Cataba, we're not going to use, you know, probably in our neck of the woods, McFlay County, Swain, you know, and good things like that. But then, you know, what's the, what's the equity, what's the fairness in the value of the land?
I think the limited number of sales was a hindrance to this county. And if I recall correctly, when we had the board V and R, those who brought in concern, brought in comps from other counties. And I think that's when our department started to pull in the comps, but I'm not sure. But I, here, here, you...
I wasn't, see, I wasn't here during the board V and R, which you can request me to be next time, if you so choose. But I'm not the clerk, the taxes assessor serves as your clerk during that time. The three things is the cost approach, the sales comparison approach, and the income approach. That's your three things. There's all kinds of different ways, and just sitting here, looking through this little book, you can lump things together, there's no uniform way to do it. I mean, she, there's different ways that she can prepare a uniform schedule of values, standards, and rules, like commercial property up to certain square feet. I mean, there's ways to shortcut, is what I'm trying to say, shortcut the actual reval. You know, single dwelling, family dwellings, and you have all the information on there comparable. You know, you have one, one price you're going to be getting.
You see, if you understand that, and I did my homework on it, tried to understand that too, if you have an income-producing property, then that's what we've got to do. But that's going to stir somebody up that says, well, I've got these cabins here, and someone says got a house that's just like it. So you see, the issue is that, you know, that evaluation is based on that. And if you add that to the record, you know, my hotel's going to be different than somebody over in St. Cor, or, you know, a creek somewhere that has a place to rent through the summer, then you're going to say, well, we're going to do that on, we're going to do that on the income side. But then you go and say, well, no, let's do it on the market value side. So let's do it on a combination of the two. You see, that's, that's what needs to be set straight.
Fine, too.
Yeah.
It, it should be tucked into consideration, the market value of it and the income of it. Because if you've got a place here, well, I'll say if you've got a peanut stand. You said 200, that was a peanut stand, peanuts a year, that's income, that's the value of the peanut stand. But the next man down here got a honey stand, and sells $50,000 worth of honey. He shouldn't be taxed the same on that honey stand and that peanut stand, Doug, because it looks different, the money income that that generated during the year.
I can see that, being on real property, and maybe that's on pretty much.
And one, one thing that does really bother me about this whole, whole mess. These four homesteaders sitting at the mouth of this hog. Lived their lifetime, scratched out a garden of grub roots, raised them a garden of potato packs. That property's not for sale, because they're going to stay there until they die and they put them under the ground. That property shouldn't be taxed as high as this man's to cut and mow outside over here and building roads so they can put it on the market.
And then the issue of potential income. Just look at it on this side, you know, from the other side, you know, the assess, or assessment already done. There may be some things that, that I'm not seeing and understanding, you know, about how the assessment's done. Maybe if this piece of property is divided up into lots for income, and there is a difference in it, I know already. You know, that if it's subdivided, then it's going to be appraised differently than it's just, you know, in the wild, you know what I mean?
And can all the variables be built into the schedule of values? Yeah, and they say that you can, you can work it all three ways. And then it looks like the board of E and R would pick the, the most feasible way. Of course, the ideal situation is that all three methods would yield something in the same ballpark. And what you guys were talking about with can a, can a tract of land that can be subdivided be valued higher at somebody's homestead? And I think that is true because they talk about what they call highest and best use. And they look at what is the, the use of this property that can bring the highest benefit or net return income to the owner? And that has to be taken into consideration when you're doing the, the rebound. But here's this property that's sitting out on the bypass. You know, it's the same amount of acreage versus the piece of property that's holding the world together. Well, that piece of property on the bypass has more potential to create income than the ones that hold the world together. And I think that needs to be considered. So, so you're. It, it appears like it, yeah.
Averaging way, maybe averaging like the three variables?
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that piece.
As long as you have substantial evidence that tends to show that the tax assessor used an arbitrary, or well, I guess this is epic at the top. But I'm going to read this if it's okay. This is a well-established presumption under North Carolina law that the county tax assessor has acted in good faith and that the assessor's assessments are correct. Uh, with the, with the correctness, you know, every taxpayer has the unlimited ability to question that assessment. That's fine. The administrative and fiscal burden imposed upon local governments, um, in a system permitting unrighted taxpayer challenges would be insurmountable. So that's where your schedule values. As long as you have evidence that backs up what bracket you chose, then, then, then it's, it will hold, it will hold. It is legal.
And Keith made a good point this morning. Our taxpayers deserve to have one to speak with, someone to speak with when they have concerns. And if you have an outside group, good luck. If we have people employed by the same taxpayers who have questions, they're going to have access to get a question answered.
Okay. Well, that's the decision here. We don't make decisions now on this, but it's one of those we're going to have to make very soon, you know, from the standpoint of beating this by 15, 16. So, um, you know, I've been told already, we're what, two months now behind in the process. But, you know, there, there may be a lot more that I'm not understanding. But, um, uh, that is, is a decision that we're, we're up to make a decision. It says decision on timeline and the action hours. So is, is that going to be a decision on in-house or out? But, you know, that's got to determine the.
May we further the discussion a little bit and close before any actions taken?
Well, it depends what purpose it closes.
Personnel.
Personnel. As long as it's personnel, we can. But they'll have to state the personnel, you know, that, you know, as well as I do. So we can do that and, uh, but openly, you know, about how to throw a revale and it being based on the scheduled values is priority. And my lead is no way of having it done in-house, I'll just be honest with you.
On, on that sched, schedule of value, Mike, one point I want to put him out to. And I've seen it happen in Grand County. And they use the figures to establish a tax base of it. If you're on top of that mountain opposite this building, and I'm this one over here. You're up here in town. Some stranger drives up, who on top of that mountain over there? I knew, I'd like to buy that. I don't want to sell it. Make me a price. You can blame the man that made him a price that didn't want to sell it. He'll say, I'll take three quarters of a million dollars for it. I'll take it. Okay? I own this top over here, maybe better than that top, but you got three quarters of a million dollars for it. I own this top. That fool won't ever come back through here if they had, if they had that three, three quarters of a million dollars. He won't ever come back and offer three quarters of a million dollars for that top. That's where you can't use what's sold for that top and evaluate that piece of land.
Yeah, I don't, I never have understood where you used property values on this piece of land versus this piece of land.
That is a real estate law.
Our land, we live on. Our land that we live on is not for sale. It's been in the old family since eighteen ninety-six, I think, and it's not for sale.
For the day and early die, don't you give it?
That's plain.
That's same way I believe. Mine's not for sale.
Fire and hog.
But when they use a tax evaluation, if they go up there, boy, I've cut roads through this piece of property and pushed out lots, sold them lots for twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars a piece, well, all the land in Grand County is worth that.
Well, see, opposite of where I live at, you've got woodland heights or whatever it is, the last deck where all the nice homes are built. But there, they'll definitely lock this in the base. Yeah. And that's just, our land crosses the road, that's what I mean. Well, you see, what happens then is that fellow that came through and bought that for three quarters of a million dollars, all of a sudden he goes and develops that property. Then all of a sudden that changes. I can understand that, but going and having just a purchase price and, and you know, and that happened a lot though, Billy, you know? They went and bought lots and said, well, we're going to subdivide this and put them back together. There it sits. And then this county, and this county, Grand County, had to come up with a way to join properties then could be taken out of that. Did we not?
Yeah, we did.
Adjoining property lines that they could consolidate again?
Yes.
I mean, for that very reason, because it'd be in the market.
Yeah.
You know, the market. And then we're sitting right here with only about thirty-five, forty percent of the land in Grand County even used.
I think, uh, J R, I don't miss it, the last revale, there's been like three hundred, I believe, new parcels, meaning land split. I believe it was three hundred and ninety.
Is that right? So there's a record of that. Didn't go appraising.
Exactly.
It makes sense that it did.
Here's another quote that's good. A county schedule also typically authorizes adjustments to land value based on factors such as home site size, excess acreage, road frontage, topography, zoning, the presence of easements, and other factors. So you can break it down at the rock cliff. It's not have to be put into the mountain, um, and.
Or the timber.
You could pull it out. Is that not how, is that not what you read? Typically prescribes ranges of characteristics and corresponding percentage adjustments for recognized factors. So that on meeting House Mountain, that is a rock cliff, should not be put into woodland acres because there isn't, there's not enough money in the world to get up there to build a house. Uh, you know, it's on a rock cliff. So that should be taken into consideration through our mapping.
Is that one of the, an adjustment on?
Probably did, yeah. But I've heard Billy say it time and again, you have this, these older people that own the property and there is a percentage of it that is unbuildable.
Right.
It should not be lumped in to.
It never should have been evaluated like it was in the beginning.
It could have been taken out is, is the way I perceive this.
Is that a statute?
Yeah, this is the, this is the citizens guide to the revaluation assessment of property in North Carolina counties. So the way I see it, you can break it down. You have the authority to do it, not just woodland acres and open field. Is that the two that we use? You could break, you could put those other, um, factors in there. This, this says you can.
I'd say you go all over the county. And make small mountain farms. I'll, I'll use your figures, say from five acres to thirty acres. And some of them may go up to much than ninety acres. But the higher the, the higher the acreage goes, there's more of that land that's given up all over the world again. They've got a small, a smaller area here of their house and a field. Some of them may have more open woodland. But anywhere you go, when you go up the branch, you turn it and you turn it, and the most aggressive, you get stickler if you go with it.
That's right. And, and two, um, what was the last thing to say? So what we, what you do is if a permit was pulled on a piece of property, then that would be established as assessment value. Regardless of time of, uh, of evaluation.
That should be your discoveries in the least.
Discoveries.
Discoveries.
Based on that.
And like Keith said, the land splits, that's another record that would offer a rebound.
Another, another thing they should think to look at when they're evaluating this land. All they know, these in the county called from the center of the ridge are the branches.
I'm still in the south.
Mine's a, uh, hollow tree.
Are you serious?
I'm going to went up the center of the ridge. And I, I've tried it both places. It's hard to dig a house seed in a branch. And when you go, if that property line goes up the center of the ridge, I run into it everywhere I went in my lifetime. You get on the side of the ridge and it's hard to dig a flat plate picking up for a dog, sit in the bark, catch your dirt fall off. If you own all the top, if you own both sides of it, if you make a nice house. But it's no value to either person.
Yeah, they leave a house on our land that far as we had our survey while the corner marker came up in the top of the house. Then the hires to our place, they, they drilled a house and they sold them two acres, I think, to get their house and yard out of our, our land.
They all went up the center of the ridge, the men in the ridge and the bull in the branch.
Well, you know, the way I see it, this is just an office, and I'm not even an office editor. You know, if you've had the evaluation in two thousand and ten, then, then you mentioned the G I S with, with J R. Uh, with the ability to say that there's been subdivision of three hundred parcels, I've never dreamed.
I might be wrong on that number.
I think it's. Well, if it has been, it's been jigged. I mean, that needs to be accounted for. And then too, um, you know, going and having this idea, and then you throw in the issue of view property.
That view is guilty, huh?
Well, what is it?
Okay.
I got a beautiful view of my place.
Yeah, but I go up there and sit down, I might not want to look at the same thing either.
So how do you, what I want to know is how do you determine if that's view property?
You, you come from my place to be with me and look at it? You might not want to see that whole county piling around.
But it's a nice view for you, isn't it, babe?
I love it. But show me, I'm there about the gutter deck, we'll go over there.
Yeah, but no two people see it.
No, but see, how do you come to the determination of the view property?
That would be on the sales of those, of those properties that are considered view properties.
Who determines that?
The registered.
The real estate agencies, yeah.
They're the ones that advertises these view blocks and things.
I know a lot to this county that the view evaluation hits the same. Which you can see. You can see the mark from what I do. But like I said, no two people want to see the same thing. I might, if I owned it, I might want to see a wire walk through the yard. The next man down, he'd be afraid of it. He'd check the door and then get set.
Yeah. That's, listen to the questions right there. They don't have a problem with you, is that how it shows up, the television card that probably that you can keep?
Yeah, but you can't go on the ground. If you get some fire, it's going to burn out, but we can get fire from somewhere.
And I think you can give it to one.
But y'all have the authority to say what factors you want this reval to be divided in. I mean, that's what it sounds like to me, babe.
Well, I was just reading the same thing. It says the county's schedule also typically authorizes, authorizes adjustments to land value based on factors such as home site size, excess acreage, road fr, frontage, topography, zoning, the presence of easements, and other factors. Schedule also typically prescribes ranges of characteristics and corresponding percentage adjustments for recognized.
Do we have that now?
Do we have that now?
Do we have that now? Do our present schedule value?
Apparently, so you can start with your. But is that what you think?
I think the only fair way to do it is have to get it through a manager on the property and establish it. Then if that fool comes in here and got three quarters of a million dollars to buy that piece of property, slap it on the tax book and tag it from now on. We're going to be insured for that.
Yeah, I've always thought, thought that way too, that, that if somebody was going to go down here and buy a lot, it's Thunderbird for a million dollars. Then it ought to be taxed for a million dollars. But that don't mean this land has got a lot next door to it that give a hundred thousand or, or to be taxed for a million.
That man had the money to do that with.
And that's always, every time this revale comes up, that places like that comes up, like they would try to pass by T of Old Farm down there for the same thing. Thunderbird was causing plate runs.
Yeah.
Have we got Thunderbird? He wants that show for the evaluation, place it on it. Action, that's all.
You know, that makes a lot of sense. So if you are going to keep your property now.
Right, we ain't burning down the taxes, Mr. Brown, you're bringing an hour.
But once, but once that's been.
Once that's sold.
Sold through.
With my old home place, it's sold off from me down there. They give a half million dollars for a tax, a half million dollars.
But then you get the issue of market value.
That's that there revival, yeah.
So once that schedule values is set, only if there's a barrier in it, my air.
But that's where you decide.
Have changes to focus the next revival.
But which approach do you use and do you average on three approaches?
It looks to me, because it's very vague, it looks to me like you got some leeway in what approaches you use or, you know. And they talk about too, about you can do mass appraisals versus plot by plot appraisals where you lump specific categories of property that are similar under one set of rule, you know, set, set of values. Of course, they call it kind of like a neighborhood or subdivision approach. And obviously, like in Asheville, if you've got a subdivision close to birth or hand, it's going to be a higher level of value than like the subdivision I grew up in over across the way, uh, across town. So it looks like, like all statutes, they leave it pretty vague to allow for some flexibility in how, how this is set.
I, I refer myself to it. I've got property, if I was start to set, I would take what the tax. But I've got some taken it for one three hundred dollar acre. They never, but if it broke ground, I can get the whole net just for it.
You know, that's probably the sweetest determination, that property all of a sudden has found itself at that. Because I want to tell you, the, the holdings of, of people locally of property, especially in my way. And you know as well as I do, farms aren't as big as anything else. But we're going to have to make a decision about the issue of in-house or out, and then set the timelines for that reval. I mean, uh, but I, I go along with what you're saying, but, because we have, what we have is the information available to make the decisions about parcel. And I'm glad that you mentioned, you know, parcel by parcel instead of lump summing it all together. But you see, then that requires that you go and say, well, here is a piece of property. And then there has to be a way to go and filter that and say, well, yes, there is this kind of easement. Yes, there is this kind of roadway. Yes, there is this kind of roadway.
It should be on map, it's all over.
And so that should be a process of not necessarily having to be going, you know, you would, in questionable circumstances, go out and say, you know, let's just go make sure we check this out, you know, against the permits for building and on things like that.
I wonder if we've got any way of, if we've got the tire to exempt like this property that you sold right here outrageous to be out of the study for the, for all other lands sold.
Well, you see, that's the problem because there's a common, what is it, thirty-seven thousand dollars an acre?
Some are non-qualified sales though. And I have, we have had that discussion before. Say an acre across from me sold for seventeen thousand, but it was called a non-qualified sale because of the rest of the land in that particular subdivision were going for thirty-seven thousand. And, uh, but it was between family, so it was a non-qualified sale. And I, you know, that bothered me. Because I, I would say, you know, if you've got seven lots that sold here, divide them out, you know. But there's something about the non-qualified and the qualified sales by the Department of Revenue. So we have to be careful on, on, on that particular section.
That's, that's getting back to where I said when you go here, those lots sold out with a price like that, that'd have ruined a bit of that, had access to.
Yeah.
You're sitting on guard across the creek, you go to drive when you get out, I told you.
That's right.
Well, these are the questions, these are the discussions that I believe we have qualified people in the county to do. And if it, if.
Do we have information?
And we're, and we have a budget, a way to go about getting additional staff. Instead of, you know, we, I don't know if we talk numbers now or not, but that amount of money that's put back, and I don't know what that figure is right now, I think it was seventy-five thousand.
We put back seventy-five thousand this year. And we'll have basically at the end of the fiscal year about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in that fund to cover the re-bout. Uh, I think you guys, if we're settling clues, I mean, adding to that would be whatever you, as the board commissioner, unlocks in the next budget as well. So if you went and did another seventy-five, then, then there's tonight.
Well, for sure, one thing is that one side doesn't pay off. And that's pretty much it. And I understand, uh, that what you're going to say, and what we're, what we're running into is, is why? Why this, why that? And all I need is the justification and based on, you know, consistent factors. Things that are consistent that go from says this. But the idea that you two gentlemen now present about, you know, a piece of property does, it's a ten thousand dollar piece of property, and somebody comes in and pays fifty thousand dollars for it, that doesn't exactly reject their rights. You know, they're asking something.
And I think there's some provision in the law there for that. Uh, because they say that market price is not necessarily equal to the market value. And what they mean by that is that they recognize there are instances where somebody may pay way more than they would have under normal circumstances. So hopefully, I mean, I can't take it for certain, but I think there's written the statute to allow for situations like what just occurred.
But now getting, getting back to that, maybe if, if, if that man paid you the way you don't slap my top, slap the taxes on it, leave it there. Don't come back to your living, to your, to your, to your, to your. Because he invested that in, he bargained that at that time.
And then what happens with it is the valuation period, you know, the economy sinks or the economy goes up and people come to E and R and say, well, I want this adjusted today, you can't do it.
Well, we were near to that several times, that the tax base is the same as the purchase price on several properties within this area, right?
Right. That's right. So, you know, there is a way and to do it more effectively. And then, well, folks, we've got Wanda, I know one, I'm here about samples and everything. We have about, and Glenn, I saw you come in. Can you hang with us for a little while? Are you sure enough? All right, because we, we go and take care of it, you know, we got about.
Four minutes.
Four minutes.
It'll be quick.
We're excited about your institute.
Architects, um, help us with the color scheme. But then you see you're standing there and they just want me to break it?
I don't see olive green, I'm good. My military olive green is turning me in.
Our blue.
Our blue. It is, I like it.
You don't have my cut room, Wanda.
What's your color green?
Red.
It says the norm, we don't lock the door, it's going to be dark. Because that's not really the less problem.
This is the, this is the. Well, that is exciting. Is that satisfied you? That's what's with it.
It's satisfied you.
But now I'm going to tell you, we did send in, they asked me in there.
She has a kitchen and I've never did a work kitchen.
Yeah, I, I was concerned about the tile for the kitchen. And I, and I was given advice based on a business owner of a restaurant and how to clean the floors and what will be easier on her in the long run. Because that'll be a, a working kitchen and commercial land that will be sitting on it. And then you have to have a code, which I think I saw Alicia in here. You know, there are certain codes that you have to go by. Uh, and it will apply to our senior citizens as well then as well.
That's good. Laura Willen Rainey holds up. I mean, I'll tell you, the time we had that reconstruction meeting until about last week.
It's been all downhill.
It's been downhill. It has. I hope that'll work out a little bit. Folks, I've got to move this right along. We're just starting to make our session in two minutes. Y'all need to take a break, like quick, two minutes. All right. Uh, we're right back, we've got to start right at five.